Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting tonight for the Pecosin Planning Commission. Our regular session meeting tonight, January 18th, 2018, we'll call that to order. And we will begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And tonight Angie Emmett is going to do that honor for us.
Start with the invocation. Father, who art in heaven, hallowed in thee, thy kingdom come, and thy will be done. As we search as ourselves, as we read the verses, as we pray to Jesus. For deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, power and glory forever. Amen. That which we preach, to the eye of the United States of America, and to the public, for which it stands, one nation, united, all in one, in the middle of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Angie. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the regular session, December 4th, 2017. Does anyone have any corrections or anything that needs to be addressed? If not, do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, Karen.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Tittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion carried by a vote of five to one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Karen. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the audience for visitors. And this is a time that you can come to the podium, give your name and address, and speak about anything that you want to, other than the item which is on our agenda for the public hearing. And the public hearing, we have a special time for you to speak on that. So if you have something that you...
The sign ordinance.
Okay, now you would not come forward in the audience for visitors, you would do that in the public hearing on the sign ordinance. Okay, so if no one does wish to come up to the podium for the audience for visitors, we'll go ahead and close that. And we will move on to the next item, which is a public hearing for the proposed amendment to Section 3D4 of the sign ordinance to allow electronic signs in commercial districts and commercial uses in other districts.
I do not have a presentation for this one, but I'll just briefly introduce it.
Okay.
So at the close of their November 13th, 2017, regular session, City Council requested that we consider amending the current provision in the sign ordinance pertaining to electronic signs, to allow it to be, to allow electronic signs to be used for commercial uses. The current language was passed back in December of 2014 and restricts it only to the city and the city school system. So only they can have electronic message signs. The current proposal that we have for you tonight is the simplest that we can make it, is simply striking one line stating that electronic message signs are permitted for use by the city of Pecosin and/or the city school system only. New line would just say, simply say, electronic message signs are permitted for use. Such signs will comply with the following standards, the standards all being currently existence. And the section is currently located in an area for permitted signs within commercial districts and for commercial uses in all other districts. So that is what it pertains to.
Okay, and we have had a work session on this tonight, or we have had a work session on sign-related...
On a related matter, yes.
Yes.
Related, not specifically.
Not specifically, but related. So we have sort of touched on some things, but not specifically. You're right, we've touched on signs. All right, with that, we opened the public hearing. And if you wish to come up and speak, please do so and give your name and address so the clerk can record it.
My name is Laura Burbidge. I live at 19 Ferguson Street in Pecosin. And my first question is, is there a time limit?
Well, we've never really set a time limit, except when we've had huge numbers of speakers. But of course, in, I mean, you know, we don't know if you intend to go on for 15 or 20 minutes. I'd say we probably would discourage that.
Coming from Hampton, you're limited to three minutes.
Yeah.
So that's just why I was asking.
Sometimes we've let people run over a little bit. And we don't usually get a whip out and crack it if you do, so.
So I'll introduce myself a little bit. We moved to Pecosin in May. We bought a house towards the end of winter last year. And we previously owned a house in Hampton. And one of the reasons why we moved to Pecosin was because Pecosin is really something special. You know, whenever we would come into town, we would say to ourselves, you know, if we ever decide to go through the process of selling a house and buying a house again, we should seriously think about Pecosin because it's just lovely here. It's a town that has something that none of our neighboring communities have. You know, we live in Fox Hill, and we'd go up to Gloucester or Matthews, and my husband would insist that we drive through Pecosin to get to 17 because it's so nice, you know. And so I saw the little clip it in the newspaper for the sign ordinance. And I was, I read through the ordinance, and I was looking at it saying, okay. So it's written so that it can't have motion and all kinds of stuff, but the text can change every eight seconds. It can be, with the rest of the permanent sign, it looks like 48 square feet, which is four by 10. It can be at every commercial property in the commercial district and any commercial use in any other district. Potentially, that's a lot of signs. There's no restrictions on color. We've got some restrictions on brightness. But can you picture, like, driving into town? Every gas station, every bank, every fast food place, the florist, the car wash, everybody has a big electronic sign that can have text that changes every eight seconds. It's, it would be a fundamental change to the aesthetic quality of this town, which is really something special. And I think would really detract from that. And when you consider trying to attract restaurants and people coming in to use the businesses that are here, it would kind of make Pecosin no more special than anybody else and any Walmart on the way home. So I just think that the aesthetic of the town is something worth protecting and preserving. And that doesn't mean that you can't make changes and things can't evolve, but to allow it the way it's written is something you can't come back from. You can't say, oh, we didn't really intend to have that many signs, and then 30 years from now decide to come back. It just, it doesn't work that way. So I would respectfully like to ask the commission to consider not allowing the sign ordinance as written.
All right, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think we're going to have anybody else want to come up and speak, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And now the planning commission can take this under consideration and discussion.
I have a question for, I'll ask either Dan or Wally, I don't know whom. Other than someone in council all of a sudden popping up with this idea, have we had any other requests or any other basis for it than that? Nope. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something somewhere. I, okay.
Is there someone on council that wants this? Is that what I'm hearing?
Councilman Freeman, I believe, made the motion for it.
Well, there must have been some reason for that. We don't know what that reason is.
We haven't been told what the reason was for it, no.
Again, I find it sort of surprising. I don't want to be too negative, but if council wants it, why the heck they send us? You know, all we're going to do is make a recommendation. If they want it, act and move on. I don't, I don't support it, but, you know, I'm not, I'm curious as to why council sent it to the planning commission if they decide they want to do it. But that's, I guess that's really off target.
Yeah, I think the short answer would be that, you know, planning commission typically recommendation for or against...
But interference.
Planning commission has a role. How about that?
Well, I'll just say, as I said, it came before the planning commission some years ago. Most of us were not in favor, but then I would agree with what the young lady said. I don't want to look like Route 17 or Mercury Boulevard. This is not a tourist community. There aren't people who, there may be a few, but there aren't very many people who drive through Pecosin, let's see if we can find a restaurant, or a florist, or a shoe store. Those don't know where they are. I personally, unless somebody has, unless someone has come up with a reason I haven't thought of, I can't, I can't see the upside or the advantage. I just don't, I don't see it. I think it is very contrary to a lot of our citizens told us about maintaining the small-town feel of the city of Pecosin. That's just Bill's opinion, so I'll shut up.
Well, I agree.
And like you said, we have, we've, we've had this before.
Yes, we did.
I would like to ask one question that I do have, and I apologize for not asking this days ago, but I just wrapped my head around it today. And I'm in complete agreement with what you said. One question that I do have is the Supreme Court decision of Reed v. Town of Gilbert, where, that states that regulations cannot discriminate based on sign content. You can only base it on zoning, or the type, and things like that. Now, the content, I tried to research this as best as I could, and it was unclear if that pertains to government versus commercial, or electronic versus non-electronic. I do know that the city can limit them if it's private versus public property, or onsite versus offsite. But I was not clear, since you cannot discriminate based on sign content, if that went government versus commercial. And I don't know if you have any background on that. It was, a lot of it was legalese.
The content meaning the message is correct.
Yes, yeah, so you can't.
As far as the type.
I would see them as different issues.
But if we're allowing, say, government content, but we're not allowing commercial content, I didn't know if that was under the purview of that ruling.
Well, I do believe, what I heard in the city council meeting was the idea that if we're not going to allow other businesses to do electronic messaging, why are we allowing the city or the school system do it? Interestingly, it's not really commercial uses. But, so the idea was to make it available, I think, to other people, and, you know, that goes a way towards what the speaker was saying. First, for the audience, thanks for being here. But there's no question that there is a potential for more commercial signage. I think that was part of the intent, is to open it up. Now, you know, whether or not those areas would be in the Architectural Review Board District, I mean, you know, obviously, there's a lot of, I would imagine there's a fair number of what we would call non-conforming uses that are scattered out about. You know, as far as Reed versus Gilbert, I'd have to read the case again. I do know there's been a lot of sign litigation in the past. Some of it treats the Supreme Court, some of it's at the appellate level. And, you know, I am aware that you can't really discriminate on content, but not really discriminate on content, we're just saying what kind of sign you can have. I mean, you know, so, you know, I don't know.
Thank you for clarifying that.
The attorney did not point, the attorney did not point out any legal...
Okay, okay.
...situations. But your question's a good one, and we can look into it.
Based on what I've been told about Reed v. Gilbert, it really just pertains to the actual knowledge, content of the sign. Not to where it is, if it's on public or private land, or anything like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Has our attorney even looked at this as far as the issue of being on the schools versus on commercial? Has our attorney had any kind of insight into that?
Nothing that he indicated at the city council meeting, but if he was seeing problem with the motion, he would have spoken up, so.
Well, it would seem to me, and I might certainly be well off, but to me, logically, a governmental, or in this case, the city is under the auspices of our city government, that that's an informative sign, used strictly for informational purposes to the public, to the citizens of the community. So it's serving a purpose, but it's not a commercial purpose. That's, to me, just, you know, is a real easy, easy difference there to deal with. I mean, in case of an emergency or something at the school, or anything that the school, the parents need to know, that's, that's informative. They're not advertising any products, they're not advertising, you know, it's not a commercial, commercial sign. So, but a load of commercial signs, up and down everywhere, and all over everywhere, I think we made that clear when we sort of went, went down this road before. We all said that we kind of felt like it wasn't something we wanted to see, you know, here. And I haven't changed my mind. I still feel the exact same way, and tonight hasn't changed it. I don't have any different opinion.
And I think, going back to the signage, again, it's to regulate all signs, so it's to protect, to protect property values, and to protect and enhance the attractiveness of the city of Pecosin. And I tend to agree that electronic signs are attraction, and can be allowed to proliferate, proliferate, so.
I think you could almost, almost argue that single driver in a vehicle that there is a safety hazard.
Absolutely.
Because if somebody's trying to read the sign instead of watching the road, I think that's a problem.
The one at the middle school, it's, it's...
Well, with that said, if anybody doesn't have any more comments, is anybody ready to make a motion?
I do have one more question. The sign ordinance went temporary signs somewhat. So this electronic signage would be the permanent as well?
Was temporary?
Electronic signs can be perceived as a temporary sign because they can be changed so quickly?
I think we would consider them a permanent sign because the structure to which the sign is affixed stays there all the time.
But the message would change?
Message will change. Up to one, one time every eight seconds.
Structure would be permanent, message possibly.
Well, no, the nature of a moving sign. Moving, in the sense that it's rolling, I guess, I don't know how to say it, it's a permanent signage, but the nature of what type of sign it is, I don't think it's temporary. It's not, it's just a changing sign. It changes the message, but that is the nature of the type of sign it is. So I don't know, is we need to get into...
Yeah, that's a permanent fixture, but the message is going to be variable.
You know, that are moved around here, there, and yonder, depending on, even on the highway, electronic signs that are...
Oh, sure, it is, sure, sure. But, I mean, I think what we're talking here is certainly permanent. I wasn't even thinking along the lines of temporary.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
It's a freestanding sign.
It's a freestanding, permanent sign.
It's a permanent structure. The message will change up to eight minutes, but that doesn't mean it's moving. It's got different lettering on it, or...
Different information.
Right, right, once every eight seconds. But the actual structure is going to stay right where it is. It's...
I'm prepared to make a motion that we recommend that this, this particular change be denied.
Second?
Second.
All right, Karen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Nellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the communications and correspondence part of our agenda, and that would be usually Wiley. Do you have anything to communicate to the planning commission?
I don't think I've got anything that's really come in, communicated with the planning commission. You know, we're continuing, we've gotten through Christmas break now, so we're at the snow days, so we're, we're back at work, and hopefully, we're not going to be snowed out anymore.
Not.
We got President's Day, that's it. But, but no, we're back, and we're all working hard. Seeing the comp plan is obviously our number one... And I will take what comments you've made about the sign, the heart, too. I think we've decided that we're not going to do electronic message signs, though. So, so, so I'll go on that. And we'll continue on.
And Dan, and I guess...
Yes. On the subject of the comprehensive plan, we have one more chapter to go, that is the land use chapter. I would like to put to you a potential schedule for two work sessions to discuss land use. The first work session would be on Thursday, February 15th. The second work session would be on Thursday, March 1st. The reason being, that would give me enough time to work on the draft of the chapter, and for you to have two work sessions to look at it, if you want to make any revisions, any substantive changes that can be incorporated into it, and hopefully, fingers crossed, to have a second draft in front of you in time for your March regular session.
March 15, I mean, February 15th, that's the, that will be a regular meeting if we have anything on the agenda, because these are the two months that we have, those holidays that sort of change us up, so we don't do a Monday meeting. So that would be before...
March 15th, the regular meeting? I thought that was the next week.
No, it's the 22nd of February would be our next regular meeting.
Is it? Okay.
The holiday, I meant to bring calendar with me.
The holiday changes, and I was just thinking that.
The president says the 19th.
The 19th, yeah.
Okay, so it'd be the 22nd.
22nd.
All right, so, so we're not having a work session before. I know we changed up to Thursdays, those two.
But it would just be a regular, a work session for that day.
Not anything?
No public speaking.
Okay, all right. Do we, do we have anything on February that you know of?
The only thing that we would have would be, you know, continued discussion.
Okay.
But that would be the only thing, it'd be a work session.
Have a work session.
I would prefer that we have a clean session on the comp plan. I felt a little rushed tonight.
Yes, I did, too.
And I, you know, I think it gets back to our responsibility. We really do need to understand this document that we're composing, so that any future things that come up, we're somewhat, you know, briefed as to rationale going into things. So if there's any way to keep the comp plan discussion work session separate from a regular session, I...
I agree with that.
We can, and we'll do it.
If we can, I think that's fine, too. I definitely like that idea. Karen, you have anything that you needed to let us know about?
These real estate disclosure statements. Anyone... I do have extra copies, and if you're doing it for me tonight, I'd really appreciate it. And...
Probably done yours.
It would be done.
All right, okay. All right, and let's see, with that said, Libby, do you have any, any comments that you wanted to say before we adjourn?
I think we're good.
You're okay? How about you, Angie?
I do. Chairwoman, as I'm sure most of us know, the city council did have a public hearing and heard about the tattoo establishment at their last meeting. They did vote down the conditional use permit, contrary to our recommendation to approve that conditional use permit. I did watch the meeting, and I was eager to hear the reasoning or a discussion as to why they went against the recommendation of the planning commission. And I did not hear any discussion or comments or anything. And I would just put out a general request of, I'd like to express a desire, I guess, to have more communication between the planning commission and city council, since we do serve at their pleasure, and we're supposed to help actualize their vision of the, and inform on how they can reach their vision of the city. And I think it doesn't do us any good as commissioners to not understand the rationale for some of their decisions, especially if it's contrary to what we're going forward with or what we recommend. I think it would be helpful to have a feedback loop as to why it may be different.
I think that's a good point, Angie.
I want to agree with Angie. Same comment to bring up, so.
Lee, you have any comments?
Nothing at this time.
Bill?
Actually, I do. This is kind of a quick one, and I'm going to address it to staff, and I'm going to say, first of all, I recognize this is absolutely not your responsibility. And it's not a complaint, but I, you know, maybe you can help get the information to the people who are responsible. I also understand the city does not have a webmaster. But I looked, I was watching some things, especially over the holidays, and I noticed it was, for instance, this meeting showed up on the Pecosin calendar, including reminders, as being a Monday meeting until after everybody came back to work after the holidays. Now, we've known for years that we're not going to have a Monday meeting. It's, it's really kind of sending out erroneous information. I'm not sure who does that. And I will also say, these reminders that pop up on Facebook and other places, which are very helpful, but like, for instance, the reminder that popped up today for today's meeting, and it was correct now, only mentioned the seven o'clock meeting. Now, the six o'clock work session was a public session. So I don't know who does it, and I'm not, I guess I'm really asking you folks to maybe either point us in the right direction or point the question in the right direction, because I think we could communicate with the citizenry a little bit clearer. And that's something we've talked about a number of times as being a concern.
That is a requirement to notify, right? I mean, that is a...
Well, it was eventually up, and I think the requirement is three workdays. So we probably met the federal requirement, but once you start sending out, once you start publishing a date that is wrong, I don't know if anybody came. I doubt that they came on the...
The website. I mean, who, who's responsible?
See, that's kind of one of the problems. There really is no webmaster in the city.
Well, who puts that information there?
The city manager's office, helping out with one or two people from our finance department. They manage the city's website.
Okay. Well, maybe they're really not aware of, maybe we're not getting them the information they need to update it. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. It's a good point.
Is it something that maybe we can make a little bit better?
Absolutely.
Because we, you know, we talked a number of times, the need to communicate with the citizenry, and I think that's something we could do better.
Well, sometimes it's for myself. I mean, I go on to look at, do I have a meeting tonight? I think sometimes Karen's always good about reminding. Sometimes I'm looking in advance, too, and I've noticed this.
But other than that, I have nothing else tonight. Wish everybody a happy new year.
Well, thank you. I wanted to say, too, Angie, I'm glad you've mentioned this, because I know I always, at the end of a vote or a recommendation, when we make a recommendation, I always tell the person who has requested us to review, review a change, or whatever, a variance, or whatever we are doing, we certainly are not the deciding factor. We're not the deciding vote. We only recommend. And I, I know this is the case, but I too watched, I try to watch the meetings, and I was a little bit dismayed at the fact that there was no discussion of, it was, it was said that we, we recommended to, you know, to, to go forward with the tattoo salon. And whether, you know, whether the council, they certainly have the right to disagree with our recommendations, and have in many cases in the past. cases in the past. I remember quite a few. And that's fine. But to me, it, when we have something come before us, I feel like we, we are obligated to serve the citizen that has come forward or the business person that's come forward and asked us to review. I feel like we are obligated as a body to, to give a fair, a very fair discussion of the matter. And, and in doing so, I kind of feel like at times, and I've said this before, we, we have things come, come up in the discussions that often do bring to light something that we didn't think about. And, and it helps us to be a better body, I feel. And, and I'm not telling the city council certainly what to do, but it was a little bit for me. I, I just thought it would be some discussion and I thought in fairness to the people who were asking for the privilege of opening a tattoo salon here. I mean, just, I, I felt like it would be a courtesy to discuss it. And so, but anyway, I, I'm, I'm like you. In order to, for us, I think we sort of need, we sort of look for that feedback. We like to hear that discussion too as a body. So we, we are seeing how the feeling goes, so to speak. I mean, I, I agree with you. I'm glad you, you, you mentioned it. And I think, I think as a planning commission, we, we need to, to be, you know, to be involved with what they, you know, feel. We need to have, have that involvement with the council to know how they feel on that. And we didn't get that on that. We just didn't get it.
Well, it's sort of like.
Yeah. We don't know exactly.
We don't know why he even brought that up, this electronic sign. There's no discussion. There's not even came to be or lie.
And it would be helpful to know. It's helpful for us.
Consider that certainly we would.
I, I am having trouble with the audio. So that if the council members are doing our meetings, there are times audio is completely, you cannot hear it at all. I don't know if it's the microphones or the users or whatever. So the question becomes, you know, the importance of the minutes. We have a process in place where the minutes are adopted in our next meeting. Could informal copies be shared with the council members? I mean, I don't know our legality would be there, but at least they would have information feedback if they don't.
We had mentioned that once before and I, I know it's, it's just a difficult thing. Another possibility, and I don't want to belabor a point, but I think if you look at other larger municipalities, there are liaisons. That is someone, for instance, in the planning commission who is a liaison to city council or vice versa, who attends the meetings.
Right.
Who shares the information. And, and that's something I think we're missing and I suspect the other boards are missing it as well. Primary boards being like the school board and the EDA that, that have a number of, I, I don't know that, but I suspect that that might be a case. I mean, I realize that puts work on somebody, but I, I think that it's really not fair for us to expect city staff to carry our discussion, for instance, to city council because that's, only thing they can really bring is this is what they recommend. I think that's, that's worth, worth all consideration.
In this case, in this particular instance, I know that we had one council member, Councilman Canelo was at our meeting and he did attend. And he was the only vote for, and I don't know whether our discussions in any way had any influence on that or not, but he was here. And at times we certainly have had Councilmember Hux here for the, you know, for our discussions, which is, is good. And I think that's good. I mean, I think that's a very good thing.
How quickly are our minutes prepared that they could be available almost prior to? How, how long does it take for us to get minutes in black and white?
It depends on what's going on in the office.
Okay, I was just curious.
Can't ever promise it'll be quickly, but I try.
And depending on when we meet, you know, there's physically not enough time to get the minutes approved before a good city council.
Right, right.
What I think we are going to do in the future though, some of the overall talk about our reports is we are going to endeavor to give a little bit more information about the planning commission recommendation for cases go to city council. We're not going to recount the minutes, but for example, if there are like three or four things that's planning commission revolves around as a rationale for its decision, I think we can list those things on there, you know, summarized, but to kind of give the city council a flavor. I know in previous locations I've worked in, I, I did that. And I, I think, you know, boards or councils will find that, find that useful. So.
I guess one more point. I, I know sometimes I feel that the onus is on me as a commissioner to reach out to council members if I do have a particular question about. So I did reach out to Vice Mayor Freeman with a question about, you know, the electronic sign ordinance. And, and I do reach out some, sometimes. And, and that's something that I should endeavor to do more, to reach out to them if I have questions as, as to their motive.
All right. Well, one last thing. I think I'm, I'm going to mention tonight that we have a birthday boy here on the, on the, uh, by us tonight, and that's Wiley. So y'all wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you.
He's, he's.
You said 30 seconds? I'll take it. I'll take it.
Well, we hope you've had a good day and wish you, wish you all the best wishes for your birthday.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Well, with that being said, we'll adjourn this meeting and thank you all.
Thank you very much.